And now we are recording. All right. Seven o'clock, town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Last week, I met with a Mr. Clarence Crossler, member of the Church of Two Twenty College Highway that has recently closed. That particular property includes the church parking lot, the our community food pantry building, and there's another outbuilding behind the church. That's all a single parcel. So our review on site was to discuss dimensional constraints under zoning. That is in our forty zone that location and the applicability of zoning matters as it relates to religious entities. The property itself doesn't have enough acreage or frontage. The desire was to be able to split the church building and from the food pantry operation. But we didn't have enough area or frontage under zoning to contemplate that option and with the oh, the number of factors related to the church operation that both coming to a close as well as the fact that dimensional constraints usually aren't what planning boards look at to relax under the Dover. I don't know, Dover Amendment, but in that aspect, very much that provides certain exemptions from zoning constraints. It's usually not dimensional matters that are relaxed under that for religious institutional purposes and the like. So anyways, as it came down, the point in my discussion was I didn't see a feasible option without tremendous requests for variances and so on and so forth to try to split the properties. On top of that, the parking lot really would need to function to serve both properties. So it was problematic, I guess, is the word that. And then today I met with Arthur Vinskas over at Crepe's Tea House, but details in that we can dive into when that discussion ends up later in your agenda.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Seven oh five, public comment. Anybody have any comment about something that is not on the agenda tonight? Let's start with the folks in attendance. Okay. Anybody on Zoom have a public comment? All right. So why don't we turn to the minutes? Four sets of minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at them? Yes. Okay. So let's start with March first. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes for March first? Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard Singer, second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
Dave Spina, I. We will turn to the March fifteenth minute. Do I hear a motion to approve the March fifteenth minute? Marcus Phelps will move.
There's a change in that somewhere along the way here. On page two. Item number three is the word it is missing. Says presidential development, special permit, and it's associated, not is associated. I think you press, I read it.
All right. Not committed yourself to doing that every single week. All right, so that's with that changed, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of March fifteen? Marcus Phelps will move. Do I hear a second?
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
March twenty second. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty second? So Marcus Phelps, so moved. Do I hear a second?
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Okay. This of March twenty ninth. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Marcus Phelps will move. Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
We also have a set of minutes from the master plan advisory committee. What's that?
No, we have to vote on it.
We have to vote on those, yeah. That there was a quorum. It wasn't the last meeting was meeting.
Do you have the date on that?
Why don't we can hold off? We can hold off.
Yeah, you can hold off. Just making notes.
So we'll start on there. No, because they are, it was the one that I actually said up.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, um, yes, yeah, but we gotta take a look. The quorum is a bit odd. All right. Since I'm part of that, I all right, seven ten, Hudson Drive and One Wally Way, continued public hearing. Will we talk to you this evening?
Good evening, for the record, we pay off our Lebeck associates here tonight for the continuation of the proposed application for the site improvements at eighteen Hudson Drive and One Wally Way. Just to kind of recap what the site improvements are, is that currently the site is just an open vacant parcel. There is a proposed eighty thousand square foot warehouse building with an attached forty eight hundred square foot office building off the front. There's an associated parking lot for the use of those buildings will appear with a driveway that connects to a loading dock area out behind the building, which there are six loading docks proposed. This rear parking area connects to the adjacent One Wally Way building where there is currently a truck loading area adjacent to that. Just a couple of items since the last meeting that that was presented to the board. We have received, basically, one of the things that was holding us back, the last meeting was waiting back for Randy to comment on this. We addressed a number of his comments. We have since received, you know, feedback from Randy that he is okay with the way with the changes that were made. A couple of the specific items on the site plan that were changed. One being, we heard that, we heard loud and clear from the planning board that the excess in parking was a concern. We previously had seventy four slots proposed. What we've done is we've sort of eliminated a row of parking adjacent to the drive aisle here, rate it back for future development should the should be change, should a change in use of this building ever occur? There's, you know, there's potential for twenty two more parking spaces along the drive aisle here. One of the, another thing that changed was that these, what you see here as landscape islands were previously striped islands. So we've added those and a number of items, detailed related items in the plant set were added. Erosion control log at the base of the cut slope here, some spot grades to demonstrate compliance with the ADA and spot grades at the loading dock, for example. But other than that, the site plan is generally the same, other than those few minor changes. I know that we also, at the previous meeting, didn't have architectural plans for this, for the building. We have since received and distributed those architectural buildings. We sent them to the fire chief. He has since responded that he's good with the layout now, as he's seen it, he knows it's preliminary. So so development of detail, you know, as the building gets designed. You'll want to review them again later on.
Do you have the plans that you could show, the elevations that you could show?
So that's this plan here. So this is just the, so this is the front elevation. So this is looking at the building from Hudson Drive. This is the front of the office building, which has a brick facade and a number of storefront windows and sort of a store for looking entry with the taller metal sided insulated panel building behind it.
It's on the screen behind you if you want it.
It's everywhere.
Welcome to twenty twenty two.
I gotta get used to this.
What's the height of it, please? At its highest point?
Call it out here anywhere. All right, here, twenty four feet to the eve here, two and twelve pitch to the roof. So it's probably, it's twenty four feet here. I don't have a measurement at the at the peak of the eve, but I can certainly get that for you.
It's under thirty five?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I gave a three feet.
That's all.
Yeah, so that's the, so that's the building elevation. Like I said, there was a number of, we had prepared a response letter to a number of different department comments. We can certainly go through those one by one if the board wishes to do that. But I think that everything in those comments has been addressed. Had a chance to review it at this point.
And you've gotten variance you need?
Correct. And yes, so yeah, good point. So since the last meeting, we went before the ZBA to request the variance for the site setback here. Because, you know, this building, this building, the property line is basically going to split the difference between these two buildings. You have a thirty foot setback to the proposed building. I believe it's like thirty three to the existing building. And the variance was granted. So the next step in that process would be to file an A and R plan, which would establish the two parcels as different properties and have cross easements, cross access easements as well as drainage easements and things like that between the two parcels. Currently, they would be under common ownership, but in the future, if they were ever to be sold or split differently to different orders, certainly want to establish all the.
True, because you have a. All right, so you have frontage and access on Hudson.
Correct. So the access to eighteen Hudson is on Hudson and currently there, there is, I believe, probably a project here. So they're going to modify that so that the two properties have this. This property is going to have this sort of pork chop shape, and this one's just going to be a long rectangle.
What accommodations have you made for handicap parking assistance from here?
Right here, so there's a number of ADA accessible parking spaces adjacent to the building here. You're basically going to have a flush curb. So you're going to, you know, you're going to be walking down sidewalk ramp flush along the ADA spots. And then you're going to ramp back up to where you have a walkway that goes to the front door of the building here.
I assume you need to come down with the A and R split on the whatever it is, but at least on this, the lower side of that that driveway there because of setback, right? I mean, I assume you need to keep distance away from that existing building.
Right, so, you know, we just it was thirty feet here, and I think this corner, because this one isn't a perfect, not perfectly parallel to this building, but the closest is this weird corner. It's about thirty three feet.
It just, I mean.
Not exactly.
It doesn't. So I'm trying to figure out in my head whether I care or not. I mean, if you were, if you had the room and the ability, I assume that you would put that property line above that driveway and keep that whole driveway area in one property versus split into two.
Right, it's.
But it's a, it's a setback issue.
It's a setback, so you're trying to maximize the the setback, you know, the property line between the two properties. And once this, once the easement is established, the, the plans already have it, it's been shown on it, on it. It just, it projects across, you know, across the face of this building to the, to the back here. So there will be an access easement across that driveway to get, to allow access around the building here.
Would that cause a problem if sometime down the road comes two separate parcels? And parcel A doesn't get along with parcel B, probably get the trucks in and out of there.
So it would be a, it's an easement that they wouldn't be able to.
I get an easement?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's going to be a maintenance agreement?
Correct. Right, so any stormwater specifically would be the
Oh, well, I mean, there's got to be a maintenance agreement for the access there. I mean, that driveway needs to have a maintenance agreement. You can't.
Yeah.
Because that property, if that gets split up and sold, that property can't maintain that access to get back there.
This property, under, under the easement agreement or whatever language is established as part of the easement between the two properties, that would have to be spelled out.
Who is responsible for the maintenance of that?
Or who's responsible for the maintenance of that driveway? I mean, I would think that this, this driveway is going to be, this, you know, this owner is going to want to maintain this driveway just for, to get to the rear of the building versus this guy's going to have the access off all the way. Just the let's just call it out, the dumpster was, you know, somewhere on this driveway previously, and we moved it to to be here at the end of the parking lot, more adjacent, more in line with access to.
What did you, you end up with for parking, number of parking spaces?
Fifty two. Down from the seventy four of more than the fifty that is required.
Yeah, I had calculated you needed forty five. So we can go up to one hundred and twenty five percent over, which would take it to fifty six point five. So you're within what we can allow. And your argument for having fifty some, I guess, is reasonable because of shift change and whatever else you can justify.
Yeah, so, right, so the fifty would be just based on square foot of the building, office, you know, kind of. I think it's one space per employee and then one space for every two offices, one space for per two fifty square feet. And warehouse is one space per employee, so that was the thirty spaces for
Yeah, plus for warehouse, one space for every five thousand square feet of gross floor area. So that gave you another sixteen. But we're, you were within the one hundred and twenty five percent over, but is minimal. And I appreciate you making the adjustment.
One of those situations where we're working the other way.
Exactly. I don't think it's ever happened in my history as the planner or on the board.
Can you, can he sell the extra spaces?
Yeah. Can lease them out.
Do you know if you guys adjust the drainage by the entrance there on Hudson Drive? I remember the neighbors across the street spoke a lot about the water sheeting in that area.
Yeah, so the neighbor across the street, somewhere over here, just stated the, I use the fact that the existing Leach and Gally didn't function too well during the winter months. So that structure will be demolished and removed and replaced with a new structure in time. And we were, we've addressed that with Randy. And so we'll install a new structure, maintain the gutter lines, we're not impeding any, you know, any flow along Hudson Drive to get to that structure. And then I think probably just having a new structure there should, should work better.
I just, I don't don't love the, the thing going through the where the A and R is going to be. I'm just trying to think of this solution around that. And I get where you're trying to do it. I mean, I get, you know, I don't want to, I understand the idea that you can divide this off. That becomes, it becomes a more buy the property, it becomes something where you can split it off if you don't need it anymore. I mean, I, so I get that.
It's not the intention, that's.
No, I, I, it's, it's like, it's a plan B. And I, and I understand, I understand, and it may be way down the line, but at least it's there and it exists and it, and it provides the I just don't. And I'm struggling to figure out whether it's.
Well, once you have the access easement, obviously, no permanent structures can be, can be, you know, built within that easement. It's, it runs in perpetuity with the, with the property. So it's only they would be able to somehow at a later point get rid of the.
No, I understand, yeah, and I'm trying to, and I think I'm probably fine with it. I just, I'm trying to think it through to make sure that there's nothing. I'm sure you all wouldn't want to do it if given your, if you, if you didn't have to, right?
Right, if we didn't have to, obviously, that's not.
All right, any, any questions from the board? Any questions from town officials? If you're on Zoom. All right, any public comments? In person, nobody, Zoom? Nobody, okay. All right. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think there's anything, I may run it by town council, just to make sure I'm not missing anything as far as issues, but I mean, I suppose if there's a easement in perpetuity that has maintenance on it to it, which may make part of the decision as well. Setbacks. You want to keep that straight line coming in from Hudson, so that you could just go straight through, you don't want to have that bend. All right. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps will move.
In a second?
Second, Richard Singer, second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I. Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I. All right, so we'll draft up a written decision and then we will review it and vote on it on July twelfth. All right, thanks, please. Thank you. All right. Seven thirty. Seven twenty nine.
Mike, this is freaking me out. No comments, we're running early.
It's now the select board that runs by planning board time, and we run on select board.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Go jam it up.
Seven thirty, nice.
For sure, you have it done last night?
Yeah. Yeah. Seven thirty, one fifty nine Berkshire Avenue, continued public hearing.
They probably didn't get out of their house yet, they probably said on computer online.
And that would be fair. Completely fair. All right, we have an email. Well, let's start with this. We did receive other, we did receive a bunch of materials and Mr. Hale can sort of give us an update as to where things stand, but I know they did get a bunch of materials in. They have to, over DPW, review them and figure out the next steps. And I think there's some more materials to come. But Mr. Hale, if you want to give us an update?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mr. Doherty, thank you. I guess I could summarize it by saying that this is the third set of material submitted and it's in a process or a technical review, the DPW, looking at the hydro. So I provided a hydrology, hydrology narrative, report, calculation summary. I looked at profile elevations, construction limits, and more details on the system components themselves, how the overall system functions. So I would say it's feels like it's nearing the sixty percent level of, of design. So it's fairly, fairly established or emerging as, as a solution. The, you know, supporting materials, the plans, the details maybe are not at the hundred percent mark yet, but the engineering side of things is, is complete or very near complete. So it's, it's a matter of summarizing now at this point and just putting the information together and providing more information or highlighting things that are, that the DPW discovers or so I'm, I'm actually requesting a continuance at this point to allow the time for them to review what I sent in today until July twelfth, so pretty much the status.
And I see here that there's a operation and maintenance inspection log checklist that needs to be submitted still. Is that something that can be expected to be submitted before the twelfth?
Yes, I should have that in there, in your hands by the end of next week, so it I don't think that should hold anything up, but that's
All right.
No reason why it shouldn't be over by the end of next week.
All right, John. You're in agreement with that for the most part.
Generally, I think Derek is being conservative on his estimate of you know, where he is in terms of a, what's called a finish line for this process. Matters are advancing. I would put the percentage higher. But he has to do the legwork, so maybe that's a, a factor in adjusting that, but nonetheless, we are getting closer. Randy and I are both out to the office next week. So although we will certainly entertain putting on July twelfth, I think the odds of having the review complete, in a perfect world, it's a matter of just acknowledging to Mr. Hill that it's, you know, satisfactory. I don't, I can't say where that is right now.
We'll throw it on there just to have it there.
Okay.
Because the next meeting is not going to be in total.
That's right.
Keep it on there, we can at least touch base on it. Yeah, I'm going to put it on for. Yeah, I'm gonna put it on for, um, I'm gonna say seven forty-five.
One six nine Berkshire.
I hear a motion to continue public hearing for one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue to seven forty-five on July twelfth.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard Hudson, your second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call, but, uh, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Hudson, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Okay. So that will be, we'll take that up at seven forty-five on July twelfth. Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you, sir.
All right. At seven thirty-five. Uh, one thirty-eight R Hillside Road, continue public hearing.
For the record, I would like associates uh, here tonight, uh, on the continuation for the proposed five block subdivision off of Hillside Road. Uh, this matter was continued at the last planning board hearing to allow for review of some comments by Randy Brown over at DPW as well as ma- making some plan changes that was requested by the board. I'll just kind of run through those here. Typically, one was in regard to the role of, um, vegetation along the property lines here, uh, to the west. Inside the buffer strip, we have gone with two rows of spruce, not like, like spruce trees, uh, offset, two rows offset along the uh, property lines within the buffer strip as you see here. Another matter was in regard to the sidewalk, where the sidewalk connected to, um, near the intersection of Hillside Road and like all your circle. Um, it was previously at the end of the radius, which, uh, the, believe the concern was that it was a little far away for any children trying to get access to a bus at Hillside Road, so we extended it down, put it, you know, on, on the property, but uh, on the radius as well, right halfway down the radius, so that you're closer to the roadway there. We have, um, received, uh, I guess the letter of no com, no additional comments from Randy. Uh, just stating that he's satisfied with, uh, the revisions that we made. A couple of those were, uh, removing the driveway, just the, um, the depictions of driveways here on the plan, just to not create confusion, uh, because each one of these lots will require a top plan, just due to some of the grades specifically. Uh, these two lots here at the end. In addition to that, we have the access to the, um, the basin out here and then furthermore to the opens, the adjacent open space, uh, we have line, proposed a line that access with uh, twenty-four inch, thirty-six inch boulders, fifty feet on center and allow for at least a minimum sixteen foot wide path down the easement to allow for any vehicular access for maintenance of the, of the basin out back there. So those monuments are specifically called out on the plan now. And that was, uh, nearly it for, uh, planning divisions in regard to various comments. Other than that, uh, I believe you've addressed all the other comments, uh, including fire department assistance. So at this point, I, I don't believe there was any outstanding, um, comments to be addressed on this plan.
Um, and as you mentioned, that we do have the email on the file. DPW has no further comments, uh, after getting to the size plans. Um, all right, any board questions or comments?
What do we decide to do with the sidewalk? You're going to stop it? Do we continue the sidewalk?
We did.
No, not the other end, I mean.
Yeah, we're gonna stop it here, have the access, the easement access here, so there's our, here. The sidewalk is all the way to the section.
Except for dollars, why are you doing that? I mean, the other homes don't get sidewalk.
Uh, basically, I mean, it's pretty close. I mean, it's, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're trying to get to Hillside and you live here, I mean, you're probably not gonna walk around this, the cul-de-sac that way. We're just gonna cross the street.
Oh, okay.
I was also concerned with the angle of the driveways, the property's gonna be steep.
Is that fairly flat? The land fairly flat or the?
No, it's sort of, the land and the grading that you see here is for the construction of the roadway and up to the right of the road. These homes, we were, um, one of Randy's comments, like he brought up early on in the process was, um, potentially filling, you know, getting the front, the first floor up to grade with the road, and we had that discussion with the applicant. He's certainly open to, to doing that, just so that the first floor is at roadway level and then, um, you know, walkouts up the back of the houses. That's most likely what will occur here. These, these blocks are just to demonstrate that there is enough space within the property lines and setbacks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I had a note that it was still in conservation.
Uh, so we were at conservation last week and it was approved at conservation last week.
Does the third house have access to the retention positive responsibility or worse, versus property line then?
So this property line is, is back here, so this basin is within an easement on that, on the property. Someone to, to.
So something goes wrong with retention plan, the homeowner is not responsible for?
No, so that will be part of the homeowners association documents, that the maintenance of this basin be part of.
Is there a reason why it's not separated out into open space? If there's gonna be an HOA that's gonna be responsible for it?
I'm not sure. It would count as open space. It's, you know, it's an, it's definitely has enough space. That, that's why I just thought that lot has sixty-four, almost sixty-five thousand, sixty-four, nine fifty. It's.
I mean, it could essentially be a unbuildable flat block, right? I mean, it's, it's essentially what it is.
It's, it's a drainage easement that, you know, it's, I mean, this property is gonna have the access easements here along this property line. And then this basin is gonna be within here. Just the way the rules are written, it doesn't have to be on its own parcel, so typically we just put it in an easement on a parcel.
What's the what's the topography out there right now?
So the topography is the basin area?
Yeah, as far as that, like that lot, what is, I mean, and as well as, as well as, what's the vegetation out there currently too?
Yeah, so there's the, the tree line, the tree line is, is follow, if you can follow me here, the tree line kind of runs like this. Uh, it goes to here and then it picks up and goes around the cul-de-sac and goes to here. So the tree line, the existing tree line kind of cuts across the property here.
Okay, so that's all tree going back there?
Yeah, that's all tree.
And what's the topography? What's the slope going right now?
Um, so where, so here's four twenty, this is four twenty, elevation four twenty, four oh five, four hundred, uh, at the rear property line, you're at four hundred.
What are you at the front of that basin?
The front of the basin, we're at, this is contour four eleven, or ten, four eleven.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? The front, the front was four twenty? So you're going down.
Yeah, four twenty, right. Just going down, be clear. Four twenty, it's right there.
And what's the road, four twenty?
The roadway is up at four thirty-six. Certainly, certainly, the, the grade is definitely dropping as you get back.
Where's the model train place really shifted?
You should be able to see it on there easily.
This is, uh, are, if you go this way, I believe stagecoach is, if you go up this way.
Yeah.
And then.
Connects over to golf.
The golf course is a little farther to the north.
What are your thoughts? On the impact on that basin, that's homeowners going in. I guess whether it's written into a decision or whether it's changed in some way, what are your thoughts on that?
The stormwater, the question, uh, the risk of impact to the stormwater basin, should that lot not be built on for a period of time? Everything else is a model stabilized or even whatever. It's a basin constructed, they go and do their house block construction and do it in irresponsible fashion, that foul if you're over the basin. Is that the primary concern?
I guess what, um, what, what do they have to watch out for with the basin?
Think, well, the primary concern, the, uh, I would see from the construction, it would be sedimentation, right? Anything that washes in there is likely to separate out fines. And that's, that's the risk of the basin doing.
I would say that would be the biggest concern during construction. Typically, um, prior to reaching grade here, you would want, you would have it temporarily, you would under, or you wouldn't cut it to its final elevation to allow it to have deposits build up because it's inevitable. And then you come out and you get in there and you dig it down to the finished elevation. So that you're, so that the bottom of the basin is in the native ground.
Mr. Chair, so I think the second half to that would be, uh, the residential construction wouldn't trip, um, the requirement for a stormwater management permit. So it, uh, may be appropriate to think under the decision here about what measures might be important to try to implement or stipulate. It's kind of tricky because I appreciate this decision applies to the entire subdivision.
Yeah.
The lot maybe built on tomorrow might be ten years down the road.
Yeah. Um, from an erosion control standpoint, I think that makes a lot, a lot of sense. Definitely you'd want to see some protection when, when, you know, when, once you're, once you have their earth there for any number weeks, months while that house is getting built, you'd certainly need some erosion protection. Ideally, there, so, you know, you, they would leave some sort of vegetated buffer between their house and that basin.
Ideally, or?
But.
I think, I, I think they have to, you would have to.
Not, not tree line, not like, not.
Not trees, but I mean, some kind of vegetation must have to separate.
Yeah, like grass, grassy vegetation, but not. I mean, if I, if I was building something, I'd probably put like a real park, sort of, right there, just to kind of.
Right, that's what I, yeah, and I, that's what I'm. You would have to, I think, and I'm just trying to think through with that. Something is just, all right.
Well, they're asking for a stormwater permit, which means we're gonna have a stormwater plan associated with this project, right? But, uh, under this application, that, that stormwater work will just be related to the right-of-way improvements, the fellow associated with it, uh, and the clearing grading and stormwater work for that basin. So that.
Not the house lots.
Not the house lots. And we, it is, those are reviewed separately. They do pass through our office. There are plane requirements for that, but I think we
So that's a standard thing we would put in the condition.
I think it would, would tend to try to bolster it, uh, up a bit, if only that, sure, the plan, um, is one thing, but also perhaps impressing the importance of that matter onto, in this particular case, the lot owner that purchases and chooses to construct out there, making sure that, um, they hear. Sure, that's the one.
It's just, uh, it, it, it's not dissimilar to some of the subdivisions that have gone up lately. This so, situation where the basin and easement on a, on a.
Yeah, no, and I
you know, that's, that's to me, that's, I'm a developer a little bit. I mean, that's, you know, I keep separating it off, make, very well. Like that property more attractive, um, potential, but I just, you know, with that elevation change, I just want to make sure that this is being thought through and done as best we can, because we've had problems with these in the past and want to make sure that this one is not an issue.
So you'd want to put it in the open space rather than on the.
It doesn't even have to be an open space. It just has, it just strikes me that if it's not going to be usable by the property owner in any way, shape or form, it doesn't add to the property in any way, shape or form. And it's gonna be, have an easement that covers the entire thing. Why are we putting it on up? But again, it's not, I don't think that's necessarily a planning board issue.
But does it add to this total acreage that the customer own, so it becomes taxable?
Yeah, sure.
It's a big lot.
But that's, that's, again, that's the developer issue. That's not our.
Couple of things are, is that we have, you know, some constraints associated with some wetlands that are all over here off to the east that, you know, we put it, you know, as far as we could to the, to the you know, so that all plays hand in hand, you have the wetlands, basin, the end of the cul-de-sac, how, you know, get the front.
No, and that's fine. I'm just saying, I, you know, in my mind, and I'm not, I'm not sure I see a reason not to have that as a five block, but at the same time, I don't think that I care about it as a planning board decision. I just don't, I'm not sure I see the reason to put it in the property because I don't think it adds to the development, but that's the developer's issue. Um, all right.
But I have a problem, I mean, even with the homeowner advisor, I realize it's not our fault, but the owners don't pay taxes on retention fund? Why can't we cut it out and make it part of the HOA?
That's the HO, the HOA is gonna have to maintain it. I, I don't, it's not our decision as to what they, what they want to do. That's their, that's their issue.
I know, it's just an issue.
I, I think it's, I, I think I would cut it out if I was them, but.
It could end up being our issue if it doesn't, if it doesn't get maintained.
But it's gonna be our issue whether it's on or not.
Maybe a couple of ducks will land there. I mean, it could be a positive for somebody who wants a country feel to have a natural pond in the backyard. The worst thing, if it was full of. Then no, my kids might fall in it and crash their souls, but otherwise it's.
You're not gonna have an HOA with five properties, just, I mean, yeah. You're not gonna, you're not gonna have one, but so.
Trees over in the winter would be a good scape. At least that's what the one in my backyard does.
Do you have one down there?
Yeah.
Um, all right, uh, any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Did I open it up?
No.
All right.
You didn't, yeah.
Uh, any, uh, town officials have any questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, Doug Woblen, five hit in place. I don't think it's a bad idea to have it as part of a lot. Because we've seen with other subdivisions in the past where for some reason the homeowner association is never perfectly formed, it never happens. The property falls into town ownership because it gets foreclosed upon for lack of payment and taxes. And, and the, the infrastructure will get conveyed to the town via easement, but we don't want to necessarily, we'd rather have the homeowners association maintain it. So having it be as part of a property will compel the homeowners association better than the town to try to maintain that infrastructure incentive. The other thing, my other comment on that is I would consider or ask the planning board to consider to ask them to place those boulders in that access way sooner than later. Because I see a continuing trend with subdivisions in the town of Southwick where there's an easement or a right-of-way, someone buys the lot and then is utterly shocked that the easement to the open space or a drainage easement. Right outside the basic window where they just built their house because they either failed to or didn't quite comprehend where that access easement was in relation. To where they like put their house. So the sooner you put those boulders, the better.
Can you drop those off tomorrow?
Or something to mark that on the ground rather than. I think the last two or three subdivisions that's happened. So take the lesson from that to somehow denote it. So that just doesn't become a problem again.
Yeah, I want to put that into such. Good idea. All right.
Marble blocks they shot.
You could always bring Phil in and move the boulder up onto the new fill, but just put it there so that they know that they're there for a reason. Thank you.
So let me ask you a question, Doug. The first part of that, walk me through it again. So it's straight in my head. You got, because you got five properties here. There's not going to be an HOA. And so. There's an issue with this.
There has to be an HOA for this because of the system.
There's not going to be an HOA for it. It's just not going to happen with five houses. It's not going to happen.
What, hold on. Can I ask a question? That's sure. Just follow that through. Is there open spaces part of this? Is this flex res? It's flex res. You only have three options, right? You have to deed it to. A farmer.
Yep.
Deed it to the homeowners association and what's the, what's the third?
Take the town.
Town lot? It's not.
The fact that you say that there needs to be an HOA does not mean that there will be an HOA. And so.
It could be in your subdivision approval.
Yeah.
Right? That there, that there is one and then that, that homeowners association document needs to be supplied to you as part of the. Before you release the, the, your signature, it's done all the time. They actually, to submit those legal documents to you. For the creation reviewed by town council to create that. And it usually is the builder owns it till they sell the last lot, then they convey it and they have to do it.
I don't disagree, but do you have an HOA?
My subdivision didn't have one. It was conveyed to a farmer. Mine was option one, the worst option to be honest with you, but it was the first flex res in town.
But there you go.
But it was option one.
All right. But just walk me through the, so. There's an issue with it. What's the town step? How does a town get involved?
Well, look at Woodland Ridge. That's a good example, right off South Boll Yard. That one had a couple of interesting wrinkles, but I believe that that property and Lex Circle, that property fell in, the open space for Lex Circle has fallen into town ownership. Because the, the developer failed to, he said he was going to do over there. So that's part of, also part of bonding and part of this process here.
It went into town ownership or the easement went into town ownership? Is that?
Woodland Ridge, I, I almost.
Actually, you're right. You're right. Because Lexington was, was, is a separate in the open space. Those are in the open space.
So, and there was no, there was no homeowner association because that's a conventional subdivision if I recall, but no one paid the upkeep on the, on the open space. So it fell into the town, town's hands. Now we own it. Woodland Ridge has open space, but it was, I don't know what happened there, but again, that open space. Now, I think owned, is owned by the town or was conveyed to the town. For this, it should be theirs to maintain. You're going to have to maintain that cistern. You're going to have to whatever, you know, if, if that's going to be deeded to the town at some point because we wanted it, I guess that's, that's a discussion for the planning board to have. But normally they would convey the sidewalks and the roadway to the town as part of the road acceptance process. If the cistern is not, it should be part of the homeowners association to maintain. And the same thing with the drainage, the retention pond. But certainly best to have it on private property and not in open space.
No, and I think that's makes sense now that I'm thinking through it and you're talking through it, but what's the, what's the town's involvement for the remedy if there's an issue there? The homeowners association doesn't maintain it. If there is a issue.
We've done it in the past. I mean, the town says done it in the past and gone on to, you know, they have to get. Approval to go on town property or if an easement is conveyed, if that, there's a drainage easement there, it's in favor of the town. The town has right of access to it, even if it's on private property because they've got that drainage, that easement would be filed in favor of the town.
Why would it be in favor of the town?
Has to be. They have to be able to get back there because if the drainage fails to work, you create a hazard on the street.
But isn't it the HOA? Well, so it would be in favor of the HOA and the town. Okay.
Good points.
All right. I just want to think through so that we're doing the right. Thing on the decision and that makes.
Oh, absolutely. That, I mean, that's, that's the best thing to do.
Okay. All right.
But like, you know, and then the, the boulder thing is, I mean, the greens is a perfect example. I mean, that, that couple's just wrong, right? And then they, and they made you guys basically reopen a subdivision to move that access way based on their failure to read the plans.
Correct. All right. Any public comments? All right, we got to wrap this up. It's eight o'clock. We got to get to the next one. This is how we roll. So I hear a motion to, uh, both of you here.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard, I'll say a second.
Your roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave, you know, I. All right.
Mike, I'm loving the new beard.
You know, it's, it's moving things along.
Yeah, it's the beard, it's the beard. Fucking diet, Mike, and Nick is a darker. There's no going backwards.
Now you tell me. All right, so we'll put this on, same deal, Philippe, decision for next meeting and go through with that.
I'll do my darndest. I know, we put it that way.
Oh, you're going to be away.
Yes. You can take it with you, John.
Thank you.
Let me see what I can do though. The file on my desk is not getting any smaller, but let me see what I can do in the meantime. We'll try to do it for next, we'll certainly let you know if there's any issue. But you know, it probably won't have a huge impact if it's July, August, August, given that Michael, the time for development, but.
Sure.
I just get it on in August. August, we got one in July.
I'd like to just get stuff done, but. All right, yeah.
No pressure.
All right, so review of plans not subject to approval under subdivision control. We're inclining.
Eight o'clock.
Oh, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight oh two, eight o'clock, 141 Condon Road. Continue public hearing. I don't know why I put my little check up here. I do want.
You kept it open from the last meeting.
You back again?
Just can't get rid of it.
Okay. That's where Randy's, I mean, that's where John's here.
Go ahead.
This is a continued public hearing.
Yeah, we like to answer anything to be added to this.
Any changes, additions, corrections?
So a couple of minor, but generally, it's generally the same. So.
Adjusted the exit.
Yeah. For record, we pray about our back associates. We did add a cedar plank fence along the. The front of the beach road here.
Can you use a big picture behind it? How big do you want it, please?
Actual size, please.
There you go.
Fence here, curb along the pavement here and to act as wheel stops rather than placing a wheel stop at every stall, just for the curb along the edge there. And to address, one of Randy's comments was to replace the distant catch basin with deep sump footed catch basins. As an improvement over existing conditions for the existing drainage system. And we removed the, there was one parking stall and it was up in this island here. Other than that.
You adjusted the exit too, right? The exit onto Beach Road.
Yes.
That was the last one.
Right. So started down here, we moved it to be on property line, at least with just one spot over.
Did even fire it towards town.
Towards town.
All right.
Where do the lights of that exit shine into the neighborhood? Across the street or?
No.
Did you miss that comment? Yes, the homeowner across the street.
Yeah, that was, that was just on words.
Mister Mitch.
That's why.
Everyone. Anything else, Philippe?
That's it.
Okay. This is. Get the file.
Do the decision.
Yeah, we do. You don't?
I didn't see it. You need a couple of carrots. We can do it anytime you want.
So we would.
We will.
I think we just said we're going to do it.
Yeah.
It's on there. That's in the record. All right, so this is. While I'm looking for this, why don't we go? Any board comments or questions? Any public officials, town officials have questions or comments? I'm just looking, I want to. Any, any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Ken, go ahead.
Ken, I also want to retire with. In addition to what Philippe said. In the form of a question, first person is the southernmost property line fence from the previous plan to this plan was changed to six feet. The beach road fence, I think it was concluded at the last meeting that you wanted to be four feet. That's what we take. It is four feet on this plan. I still want to say that I wish it was three. And that's all I had. Let's stop right there.
Any other public comments? Check on Zoom, make sure I'm not missing any. All right. Anybody? No, it's a negative. Okay. Where was the? The wellhead issue is that is where?
The entirety of the property.
It is?
Yes.
I don't think it was only part, all right. And is this still pending a conservation?
It is still open. Pending one final comment in regard to the Bruce leader, whether those are required to be infiltrated or not. Believe was requested to infiltrate the roof theaters, but there's no regulation or statutory requirement to.
That's the only existing issue with conservation that may change in any way. And now we just changed our comment to the plan, so. Wouldn't be shown on, it wouldn't be shown on, it's not shown on the plan, is it?
It's not shown on this one, no. It would, it would, if anything, would be subsurface.
Right.
Do you have a copy of the notes from Randy down? Saying that you did not feel it was necessary? And also the oil.
Yeah.
Oil thing is not being either. Correct. So the, the comments, I believe, were from Randy was that, or that were being addressed at the conservation board in regards to oil water separator and infiltration issue. The oil water separator was, was, I guess, included that. This whole Kung Mon roadway drainage system goes through a water quality treatment before it discharges. Outfall here for a base separator, they call it. So that in addition to the improvement over existing conditions with the deep self-footed catch basins. Satisfied that comment. And then the other outstanding item was in regard to the subsurface infiltration. Randy reiterated that there, that he's not aware of any requirement to provide infiltration.
This is what I'm trying to think through in my head. I'll tell you so that you can offer your comment on it. If I make it. So one of the requirements in the wellhead protection district. Is. All right, so you have to. After Michelle's plan, so plan. Will include. Drainage recharge features and provisions to prevent loss of recharge. Which. I think you guys have everything that you don't believe will be. Applicable, but it strikes me that with the. What's being proposed? Because this is for the entire project. This is your first application for the wellhead permit. This isn't, this isn't, you know, a modification. This is the first application.
So, but so modifications to the special permit. And it's an application for the wellhead.
Right. And so based on what's being proposed here. How does that issue not? If that issue is still outstanding with conservation and I, I'm not taking a position on it one way or the other, but if it's still outstanding, how are we able to? Say, you know, that everything you've shown here, that you're addressing all the discharge, the drainage recharge features and provisions to prevent loss of recharge. Isn't that, that issue? To some degree?
It would be just, I guess, a matter of whether or not the proposed improvements would adversely affect groundwater. I think it's how. You know, it's, it's stated to, to protect groundwater. I have each one of the things here, but basically. You know, it's an existing facility. There's existing gravel here. There's very minor, you know, expansion into this vegetated. Edge of the property here, but. You know, the proposed improvements are improving over existing conditions with the, with the deep self-footed catch basins. And I think the water quality from the property is just as far as, you know. Redirection and, and collection of the stormwater, what would be an improvement over existing conditions. And there's nothing that would adversely affect groundwater based on these site design.
But that's your position. I'm in, in. But that's your position, I'm in in regardless of whether it's accurate or not, I don't, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying we have to issue a wellhead part, one of the reasons why I, you know, I'm careful about waiting until conservation is done is so that, you know, the A, there's no changes to anything, but B, at least with these, you know, I I do wonder whether this is something that needs to be shown on the wellhead, on the on the site plan that's submitted for a wellhead protection district permit. You have to show all drainage recharge features and provisions to prevent loss of recharge. And, I mean, I I I don't know enough about this stuff, but it strikes me that if there's an issue between infiltration and not infiltration, that 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 goes to that issue, doesn't it?
So the the existing roof leaders, so I I from a groundwater standpoint, you know, stormwater standpoint, we design everything to, uh, you know, not a redevelopment, but similar to the what we've seen earlier tonight with the roadway, some of the things like that. We provide, you know, an infiltration base in that basin, what is an infiltration base to to sort of balance out the loss of groundwater cheap recharge from that new roadway that's coming in and getting that in in based on calculations, getting a certain volume of water back into the ground through the basin. On a site like this, the groundwater, I mean, you're directly adjacent to the pond, it's more of a protecting the ground, you know, adversely, you know, not adversely affecting the groundwater from, uh, you know, a existing developed property. So I I I I'm pretty sure I understand where you're, what the concern is, right? So you're saying that, you know, from a conservation standpoint, you know, getting infiltrated the roof runoff would be an even greater improvement over existing conditions. What we're saying is that, you know, this site doesn't have much groundwater recharge as it is with the existing developed portions of the property. And that, you know, adding a subsurface infiltration, you know, some sort of subsurface infiltration system would you know, it'd be in excess of what's.
I don't, I don't care whether it's an excess or not. All I care about is whether it's a drainage recharge feature, which I think it is, isn't it? And it would have to be shown on the plans that are submitted to us. If it's.
If it ultimately.
Is 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 required.
It is required, if it ultimately is required, it would be a groundwater recharge.
That's what I think. And I'm not, yeah, I'm not taking a position on it, I'm just saying, this is one of the reasons I think why we wait until conservation is done, is because I want to make sure that everything that they say gets put into the plans and that we have the full final plans and so that there's not something going on later on, that's the only.
When's the next conservation meeting?
I don't.
Why?
Don't we usually put in a provision saying that it's contingent upon approval of other boards and commissions, it seems like we've always put that in. And there's also a statement in here, and I don't know how we want to look at it. Item three, sub number or sub letter B four, non-conforming use, which this is, non-conforming uses which were lawfully existing, begun or in receipt of a building or special permit prior to the first public publication of notice of public hearing for this chapter, which is a stormwater, may be continued, such non-conforming uses may be extended or altered only as permitted in these zoning bylaws and only if there is a finding by the planning board pursuant there hereto that such changes do not increase the danger of surface or groundwater pollution from such use. So we seem to be concerned with groundwater surface and groundwater pollution.
No, and that's, so here's all I'm gonna say, and I'm not, we're not gonna, it's not gonna get delayed, I just, I want to make sure that we're on the same page, I don't think. I I think that that has to be on a final plan, that if it's if it's required by the conservation, ultimately. I think that, you know, our decision will say that there has to be a final site plan in a at it submitted, and so I think that has to be incorporated into site plan submitted to us to satisfy the requirements of a wellhead protection permit language. Because I think it says that you have to show all whatever it is, drainage recharge features, and that's potentially one, if it is gonna be part of the plan. So, you know, we can put that.
Sign the plan 21 days after. Right? Appeal period ends, we sign the plan after that.
But um, there has to be a. Correct.
There was plenty of time based on our condition for that to be added to the final site plan that we would actually sign in August end of July.
But you're affirming that the site plan meets the requirement already.
Well, no, but it's, I think the requirement of the bylaw is to submit what you know at the time, right? And they submitted what they knew at the time. If there's going to be one, all they have to do is put it on the site plan, I don't really care, so I I'm okay making it. If that's being represented as being the only outstanding issue, I'm okay representing it being conditional that you know, before it gets signed off on by the planning board, you know, that has to be finalized and one way or the other, you know, put on a plan that we sign off on at the end of the day. If if there's other issues that come up with conservation, then then there's gonna be problems. Um, but if that's what you're representing, then I'm fine with just saying, you know, that that we'll address that when it comes to, you know, you 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 finalize it with conservation and then assuming that's the only change that can get submitted to us and be signed. Or if it doesn't get adopted by conservation, you can, we'll sign that, right? I mean, it's almost like an ad build, right? I mean, it's almost essentially signing off on the ad build that we get for development at the end of it. Sure, you know, which may have minor changes, but I mean, I think I'm okay with that, but I the way I read that, ultimately in the bylaw, we don't, you know, to satisfy issuing of a permit, there has to be a site plan that reflects all the drainage recharge features.
And we'll know for sure on that point at the next conservation. This is wellhead, sorry, Mr. Chandler, right?
Yes.
Chapter 185 zoning, right?
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I have no comment on what conservation. That's that's their issue, but I think from our standpoint, we have to meet the requirements of that bylaw, and that's one of the requirements. Anybody have any questions or comments on that, on the board?
No.
All right, um, any other issues to address before we close the hearing? All right.
I have comments on the decision which has been drafted.
Yeah.
By our planner, so we'll discuss that whenever it's appropriate.
This is just for the modifications and the wellhead protection. All right. All right, so here a motion to close the hearing.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard, sing a second.
Sure, we'll call, well, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Johnson, right.
David's up, right.
Dave's been a high.
Okay. Hey. Why don't we just go through that, why don't we just go through the decision round, Tom?
The decision? Yeah. Anybody else need hard copy?
Let me read forward to right now.
You don't have the actual decision, you have John Goddard's transmission. As far as the nine page, that's on me, 10-page decision.
Okay.
10 pages.
Yeah, let's just print them out.
Any of those 10 pages? Pick it up.
So long, I think it was attached. So print all, then do it. Whoa.
Good.
Whoa. I can read it from way back here.
There you go. That's right.
Thank you.
You sure? You'll be getting your own personal. Should do it in color.
This is my sign that give your full copy of it.
I appreciate that, we'll we'll touch upon it, we're probably gonna do as well here, we'll burn down a fresh.
Oh, man.
I appreciate, and this reflects the old one.
I think I never would have highlighted it since it seemed to be a barrier.
I think no cool funding page yet. No. That's a paid online.
Marcus, where you heading?
What?
Where you going?
Right here.
You want to give a master plan subcommittee update?
Oh, whoa, whoa, master.
Drumroll.
Ah, let's see.
Too late. Too late, she's back.
What?
Take care of it.
We are progressing according to Mr. Goddard, he had a Zoom call today with a work group that was charged with making sure the survey question. The survey questions online match the paper copy of the survey. When we reviewed it at our last meeting, there was a discrepancy in the numbering system, so we didn't want the public to get confused. We anticipate that the survey will go out on July fifth or so, and the deadline for completion will be August 31st, so there'll be a two-month period to either complete the survey online or in hard copy. Hard copies are gonna be available in town hall and at the library. Uh, also a postcard will be mailed to each household, letting them know the survey is available to complete. John, you have anything else to add?
Nothing I can add at this point in time.
Things are moving along, our next meeting will be July 21st, a meeting in July, and hopefully one meeting in August. Our funding is very good, strong. We've got a district local technical assistance grant of 30,000, and we feel that's gonna help us through into 2023, and we anticipate getting some additional funds from the state. Not officially approved yet, but it's very close, Mr. Goddard has been getting required signatures to get that grant set up, so good news. All right.
Now let's go back. 41 decision. Of the artist. I mean, I'm gonna just modify it to the working document.
That's what me out for David.
Thank you.
Just let me off on that.
Man, page one here.
Yes.
You have everybody 10? All right, so anything on page one that needs to be adjusted?
I'm sorry, we do have a last revised date. That's new, is that particularly?
Yeah.
2.7.
And the and the original date's gotta be.
That can't be right.
Oh, no.
January 24th.
Yeah, that is reasonably correct as formatted on the plan.
January 24th.
Oh, because they just mentioned the original, okay, I guess that's fine, yep.
Just have say revised 2.7 to try and get rid of.
Which on revision date of January 24?
Yeah.
Why is that original revision? The first revision.
The issuance date is blank. So I'm sure it was someone was ambitious when I put in the revisions, and that's where it's at.
So what was the first revision, what was the first revision between the time of the original decision and?
April 19th. For this modification, correct?
All right.
We say last revised. Last revision of something to that effect.
Thank you. Um, alright, anything else on page one before I go to page? Findings.
Item four. Seems to me they were requesting three modifications. And there's only two here, A and B, I think the third was the change in the, what do you wanna say, barrier along beach road? Originally it was a.
Well, that's expanding.
Planter.
No, this is just, this is the original decision, we're just.
This was in the original decision?
This is the original decision with modifications noted.
So four was in the original decision?
I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't say it, but I know that. I think this is it.
Look, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, nevermind.
Descent, are you showing?
To modify.
It says, no, proposes to modify. So, the app, we should look at the application, seem to be there were three changes that they wanted to make.
No, no, well.
Unless you're saying expanding and redefining the existing off-street parking area includes that change from a planter to a fence.
Not here, that's, that's fine, so let's.
I mean, I don't know, I just, just thinking in my head, we had talked about three items.
So tell me what the three things are.
We can figure off-street parking. One with the curb cut. Access eager at the road.
Remove the planter and replace it with a stockade fence.
That's a good thing to do separately.
I mean, I, I'm thinking there are three were listed in the application. We have the original, oh, you have it, okay. And.
Oh, in the world.
Yeah, the wellhead protection.
There are other minor.
First they revise the parking and so forth, so. Which he has in here, expanding and redefining existing off-street parking area. Yeah.
Thanks. Figure off-street parking and curb cut access modified, screening and material, screening materials and.
Looks good.
Anything else on page two? Sixteen, anybody have anything? Add it to this based on what the changes were, the changes were pretty. This is the modification.
You chair, I remember eleven. The word freestanding. The grid be, remain freestanding walls, just returning all. So. I don't think we have any more freestanding walls, just.
Alright, anything else on?
I'm sorry, item number fourteen. There's a some exception in there, I see, for the wellhead. So I think that entire, yeah, doing the rest of that change.
Alright, anybody have anything? Okay. Specific findings.
Number one.
You gotta change. Yeah, yes, go ahead.
I don't know, I haven't checked. The total now is sixty-one.
Today's total is sixty.
Okay. And there's eleven parking spaces partially or entirely within the public right of way, I just looked at the plan. Uh, I don't see twelve, but John, you can probably find twelve.
Today's plan doesn't have the helicopter space, eleven square.
So it's eleven, without the helicopter land pass.
Gonna need that down the road, it's not gonna be there.
And we're standing with sixty-one.
Sixty.
Pardon?
They got, say, got rid of that.
So there's sixty.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Go on to. That's the page four. Anything? Anything? Go on to page five.
Eighteen added a couple of things which are correct, appropriate. Close abeesment or licenses to be obtained by the applicant from the town and or other authorities, having jurisdiction that was kind of a repeat of what you had said earlier.
The wellhead protection.
What's the change?
Is that, I think we need to have it separated up. Anybody have anything else, why don't we look at, this language is what we're gonna end up using.
Twenty, there's, the wording in twenty, at the end there says, a proposed use is designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, characteristics of the site to be developed. I don't know what characteristics, I, I would think maybe grading would be more appropriate, I don't know. Soils, topography, grading of the site to be developed.
In grade.
In other words, you're saying to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils. I don't know, John, there's something there that just, it doesn't happen, I don't know.
Language from the bylaw.
It just does a comma and then characteristics.
Yeah, I put and just cuz it's.
Yeah. Alright. And then twenty-one, if it's coming from the bylaw, but there's no reason, this is supposed to be a finding. Does not increase the danger of surface or groundwater pollution because seemed to me we would say because. Whatever.
What's your whatever, and just leaving it at whatever?
Well, they're putting in those catch bases, whatever they are, what do they call?
Some, yeah. Some of that, because of the site.
Perfect. It's perfect.
That's what I. Yeah. We put the terms and conditions separately.
These are specific signs.
Yeah, okay, alright. As long as the vote's settled, we're fine.
On the vote?
Uh huh. Alright. Alright, anything else on? Page five from eighteen to twenty-four. Twenty-five adds the four foot high stockade fence. Yeah. Let me just, I wanna do what we've done in the past. So. Anything with the terms and conditions related to the special permit? Five. So, continuation of five going through eight, anybody have?
I would just put in before conservation commission.
Be a half state. Thing with.
Ten, the existing freestanding sign within. That's not a term and condition, it seems to me that's a finding. I mean, unless we say something about it.
No, it's just gonna be like.
Pardon? So that's a condition. Instead of proposed. Shall be.
I mean, it has to be to accomplish what. Okay. Eleven through thirteen.
Eleven needs some work, oh, eleven? We changed the numbers, whatever. Eleven through thirteen?
Well, what you can see on the screen, that's why.
Thirteen needs some work. We're saying ten of the thirteen remaining parking spaces of an easement or licenses obtained shall be dedicated to the accessory marina use. Seems to me those parking spaces are not gonna be practically usable for the marina. I don't know why, is there a reason why we specify a certain number are to be used and their location for the marina? Seems to me it's, it's as a whole. Right here, the way this is stated, we're saying specific, a specific number and location Right here, the way this is stated, we're saying specific, a specific number and location of parking spaces are to be for the marina. And I don't, I don't think where we're specifying they're located. Is really where they would be used for the marina.
We're not specifying.
Yes, we are. We're saying, we're saying they're within, I believe.
So sixty parking spaces. Fifty which are outside of the. Right away. So.
Because it's worded of ten of the thirteen. The thirteen doesn't have to be any specific. That seems like that's identifying the. The easement parking services. And that's not, or not requesting that marina parking spaces be designated within those specific thirteen. Just needs to be split up here a little bit more.
Because this seems from practical standpoint. Closer down. Or they just park where they can park. Right, you like we say. Yes.
Utilize the accessory marina use, ten parking spaces must be dedicated to said use. And do you want them marked or identified as such? Sure. Ten utilize the accessory marina use, ten parking spaces must be dedicated to said use. And do you want them marked or identified as such? Like you're identified as such.
It says it already, doesn't it?
For item thirteen.
I see it.
That's why there was a lot in there and it didn't seem like it flowed right. And I don't know, is the word dedicated? I mean, we talked about. At length, how we determine how many parking spaces were needed per boat slip. We came up agreement to zero point five. And therefore that translates to ten parking spaces needed. In the parking lot for the marina.
They have to be dedicated.
You may.
Prioritory. This is, this is a big word.
Here's all I care about.
How about designated?
Well, let me just say this. And tell me if you. All I care about is the math. Right? You're gonna use. Twenty slips. You need ten spots that are dedicated to it. You're gonna rent out. Ten slips. You need five spots that are dedicated to it. If you're gonna have a restaurant that has a capacity of X with. X employees during the maximum, during the. Busiest shift, you gotta have X amount of parking spots under the calculation in the. By law, that's all I care, I don't care how. He wants to. If he wants to. Maximize the restaurant. At period of time and not use marina, that's fine. If he wants to use the marina. And, you know. If there's any issue with parking spots and lower than the amount of the capacity of the restaurant, that's fine. All I care about is the math, right? We figured out the math. And that's all that matters, right? So you need X amount of parking spots to use. You need point five parking spots for every slip, or you need. You need two parking, you need. One parking spot for every two.
That you care about the math?
No. Yeah, so you would take away this last part of this, this requirement then. This is saying here they have to be identified.
No, I think they need to be identified during the period where they're being used.
Set ten off.
Whenever you're using marina, you wanna dedicate and identify.
Shall be restricted for use by. From you. Yep. Can you take the sign down in the winter because? You have more.
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna pick up during the.
And you like the word dedicated. I guess dedicated. No, okay. Something else will keep me up.
Utilize the. Rental slips. And parking spaces must be dedicated to. All right, so we can erase that, right? We care about the October, May fifteenth, October fifteen. We just care about, I don't care seven dates, I just want that.
Isn't that they have to have the both paddles?
But I don't, I don't, but if they wanna do it only from June first, I don't care, as long as they're gonna use the marina. And that's when they're doing that.
John, we need to refill a candy dish.
It's been absent, it's been notably absent.
Yes.
So.
Based on the stated.
All right, here we go, I'll read it out loud for everybody to. Here. Based on the stated restaurant eating establishment tavern use as identified in the table uses found at chapter one eighty five, attachment five of this kind of soccer. I was. The off street parking requirement. For the. Restaurant. Use. What's the, what's the, what's the? What's the capacity? Number that they.
They got sixty total and they're using ten, so they have fifty available for the restaurant.
Ninety five persons.
Based on that by law, the off street parking requirement for the restaurant use. At a, what is it? What is the word capacity? Out of occupancy?
On the plan, what's the term used?
What's in the bylaw? What's the term in the bylaw? Drinks. Plus. But it's ninety five. Yes, so. Based on the bylaw, the off street parking requirement for the restaurant use at an occupancy rate of ninety five patrons is forty eight spaces inclusive of ten. To utilize the rest of slips of the accessory marina use, ten parking spaces must be dedicated to said rental slips. Said ten off street parking spaces dedicated to the accessory. Accessory marina use should be identified by signage and shall be restricted, blah, 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 blah. Same thing that was there, except that I added. In order, in order to ensure compliance with the bylaw and this condition. At the end, because you had to comply with the calculation. All right. Sound good? Thank you. Somebody's talking. I would not be able to let it go either, so I can fully understand that.
Mister Chair, if I can just say it out loud, so. Ideas running around, wanna make sure that we comment or that we don't obstruct. The off season. Feel the winter condition. And. Making sure that those dedicated spaces. Whether the dedication of those spaces only applies when they're in use.
I got snow. Not a watercraft. Dick, go back for.
You're right, I took out that little thing before about the.
You took out the dates. What you're saying here, it's only when the marina is in use, right?
Correct, yeah. So let me just add something that says.
My condition.
It's open when the marina is open. And the marina is. He's adding more words.
It's getting it up to twelve pages.
What is the other occupancy rate?
What's the occupancy rate?
One hundred and thirty.
Off season.
One hundred and thirty.
We're almost there.
All right, can we read it? Okay. Based on the bylaw, blah, 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 the off street parking requirement for the restaurant use at an occupancy rate of ninety five patrons is forty eight spaces inclusive of ten. Employees as stated by the app. To utilize the rental slips of the accessory marina use, ten parking spaces must be dedicated to said rental slips. When said rental slips are not in use, an occupancy rate of one hundred and thirty patrons may be allowed. Said ten off street parking spaces dedicated to the rental slips during the time when the marina is in use. Shall be identified by signage and shall be restricted. Said ten off street parking spaces dedicated to the rental slips shall be identified by signage. And shall be restricted. Shall be identified by signage during the time when the marina is in use and shall be restricted from use. During this time by employees or users of the restaurant slash eating establishment. The app is responsible for the management of off street parking space allocations for the bar restaurant use and accessory arena. In order to assure compliance with the by law and this condition. Work for everybody? Okay. You sure, Simon, you don't have any more changes? I thought there was some comment from you.
Maybe the design of the sign.
Marcus?
I think the board of subcommittee. I thought thirteen was, or not thirteen, now it's fifteen was very creative.
Yeah, we came up with that last year.
I see a red word says consecutive. Consecutive years. Saying to me that's a new.
Yeah, I think that's more.
And you're keeping in the dates, you're keeping in the dates here.
We talked, I can't remember if we decided anything about the. We had put the. Was there any change gonna be made to the where the rental? Slips were versus where the. Non rental were, or do we wanna specify that that's gonna be left for that, or left to the? Left to the chapter ninety one.
Oh, right, well, we say, we say the southern, we say an item, oh, that's what you're discussing?
I'm wondering whether we just take that out. Said the most prohibited.
Fourteen.
And just let the, let, let that get decided in the chapter ninety one.
I thought we.
Why do we really, why do we really care where do you park, where do you park the spaces?
Well, we're trying to protect the butters, for one thing. Because at the trench and docks, there's a lot more in and out, in and out, in and out. It is not our really, our authority as far as the chapter ninety one license.
So I'm gonna say, what it says unless prohibited, I'm just gonna be. Subject to. Change. Look at the change that I want.
Can we? Well, I guess that was in the original. The planning board may adjust the permitted quantity of leased or rented old slips. We really control the parking spaces, that's really what we control.
Some to the decision of the Commonwealth Massachusetts, there in chapter ninety one license proceeding, we approved slips to be located on two decks. On the southern side of the property away from the cover, but the rest of slips located on the southern most deck. I mean, it was putting, this was actually putting the rental slips closer to the.
Correct.
Yeah.
But there's probably less.
Somebody else. Yes.
Yeah, it took me. All right, anybody else have anything on fifteen to eighteen? Okay. And then I do wanna put in. Uh, and then I do want to put in. I'll check and make sure.
No, one more.
Yeah. One hundred and fifty.
I started there and went over this all, so.
Um. All right, application for vitalistic chemicals, pesticides, fuels, blah, 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 that's in the bylaw. Sorry, many toxin. Bubbling materials prohibited, that's by law. All storage building foundations, so it's both contain a system as described in the site plans. That is not, that is not necessary on this one. And the performance standards is.
So the, the second sentence of item number two. As well as the third.
There's no fueling on site. Toxic substances associated with.
Oops.
That was.
That's just free.
Something that says that um. There is, there is no.
What, nothing? No fueling allowed. If they can fuel their own, can you bring your own tank of fuel? Most cases, most places, again. Should we have a spill kit available? Is chapter ninety-one going to require that?
They're both already in the water. In the water, you don't need tree litter, put the oil in the water. Right?
You need those.
My logic line has been really up.
You need those.
You just hate for that, don't you guys hate?
What are they called?
You just throw swans in there and let the feathers soak it up.
Containment. There is. Should that be absorbed in materials, no matter how much water you have. But again, that's, we don't think, we're on the land.
Tell me, tell me any of us, the applicant should provide a list of all chemicals, pesticides, fuels and other potentially hazardous materials to the user stored on some premises. Fire department conservation. Stay with that.
They're good.
Yeah. Storage of any toxic, explosive, corrosive, or flammable or hazardous material is.
State water.
Yeah, and all performance standards listed in one eighty-five twenty-three. Or two. And all.
We're talking about the land, what's gonna happen on the land? In the parking lot. I'm gonna be in the water where the ice cap melts. I'll put it on any touch.
But I actually have no list because it does say it here, I just want to make sure that there be no. No. Storage tanks. Or.
Do it fuel comes over there. Hold on. That'll protect stuff.
All right, um. Anything else? All right, um. It's a special permits and we do have to do a separate. Two seventy-two minute.
I did not have.
For the.
Both.
This.
Well, here, this.
Okay, everybody good?
Life. Yeah, oh, yeah, stay west.
Yeah. All right, um, do I hear a motion to accept the written decision as? Modified.
Is that the right motion? Are we approving this or we just accept it?
I will use whatever language you wish. Right here, a motion to issue, approve, accept, and otherwise. Sign off on the written decision as modified here today.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
All right.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Go roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
All right. Make sure to include all of those in the.
Do we approve the wellhead separately? You said that was a separate vote.
Yeah, what I, um, and actually I take that back, so that, that was about the, that should be about the special permit.
Modification.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, let's do this again. Yeah, you got me thrown off with the words that I just didn't even. Do I hear a motion to?
To grant a special permit modification.
To grant, approve. Otherwise, accept. A. Special permit, a modification to the special permanent site plan approval. As.
Repeated extent.
As included this rate of decision.
Marcus Phelps, so.
Actually, I take that back. No, you got me, now you're throwing me completely off.
Right.
All right.
Just read it right there, Harvey. Vote.
You guys want to get back to us when you figure this out?
Yeah. No, no, there you go. Do I hear a motion to grant a modification to the special permanent site plan approval? For one forty-one Kongman Road, as reflected in this written decision.
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Right here, a second.
Richard, sing a second.
It's a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave's been aye.
Do I hear a motion to grant a wellhead protection district permit um for one forty-one Kongman? As reflected in this written decision.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard, sing a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I, David Sutton, aye. Dave's been aye.
And. As I don't, I need to check on that to make sure, but. Do I hear a motion to accept? Uh, and. Prove, sign off on what have you. This written decision um as modified.
Like I'm willing to give the second guest the beer.
It was working for a while.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Go roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I. David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. That's done. Yes.
Make a motion to get Michael Razer and some shaving things.
Yeah, we're almost.
All right, A and R.
Yeah, not much.
You're gonna miss it, thank you.
Have a good night tonight.
Yeah, hey, see you, man, thank you. Hey, remember, just so you don't have to carry that around, you've got this thing now. You just wait at that. Give me your water off. It moves too, you could, you could swing it.
They are A and R.
We did that just for you.
We've got a lot of A and Rs out here.
This is something's neighborhood here.
A and R.
Yeah.
Your neighborhood, Dave.
Yeah, they haven't sold one yet, though, have they?
Okay. Additional frontage lots at Moore finding road. Presented for approval with adequate. Frontage in the area, so this is just for lots, excuse me, eight, nine, and a revision to lot five. You can see they've modified it to either radius. Presumably to accommodate future access. Future access moving to the back lots.
Yeah. I would think.
This sounds like they were looking, Dave, out of.
Yeah. You think David?
Hundred fifty-nine point eight-three.
Hundred two-hundred.
That's, I think, future access.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we look back here.
Good night, gentlemen.
Have a good night, Glenn.
Good night.
Good night, Mr. Eccleston.
I don't know.
We'll see you.
He's gonna come here.
Yeah.
So, so where's your?
That's huge. Long way to hell up here.
Right.
Yeah, I am. It's, I know where I am. Listen, what threw me out again? I'm not coming down this way. That's a bad neighborhood down there. That's the south side.
They paid us today, didn't they?
Pardon?
They paid us today?
Yes, they started, yeah.
They grounded up.
They have done when I say. That's nice, interesting process.
The turn.
Okay, Doug, why do you get rid of that corner more volume? A quarter of that is a car park there.
Now, wait a minute, this is on record, you know, this is being recorded.
I care.
How many lots again?
Two?
Really defined.
Doug, what he's looking to do, he's gonna, he's gonna cut in here and develop this. Eventually, he's gonna cut in here, eventually open this up. Just about, you're more finding, something is up here.
Is this seventy-two?
Yeah. If he's gonna come in here. Seventy-two.
More mining. Yeah, the little numbers on the south side would make more sense. But the whole thing doesn't make any sense because you've got mining hill, more mining, mining hill.
Give them a boulevard.
The mine hills in Grand Bay, nice.
You can find a hill on.
That's what they were supposed to do at Noble Stadium, actually.
Yep, that's right. Very big, it's gonna be a bit confusing. It's like the shaggy.
Whatever you call it.
Boulevard?
Is that what it is?
Sure, yeah. Kick radio?
Yeah.
Who might argue?
That's the stuff that's big.
Birthday thing? It's a house on the birthday.
Yeah, I think they are. I think Mr. Sutton has agreed, so.
All right, do I hear a motion to? What's the word I want?
Endorse.
Endorse. The A and R. More grinding road.
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second?
Richard, sing a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. Hey. That is all set.
Getting a step ahead of them.
Hey, it was in the right place at the right time, you sir.
Signing.
We got those.
My beach of data now. What else is on your mind, Mike?
That's a good time.
It is.
All right, um. Item, Southwood DPW, parking lot design guidelines, L I D barriers, nip feeds, M S four permit components. That did not put you to sleep.
The drone. How many pages? How many pages?
Oh, this is a narrative presentation.
Oh.
Everybody awake.
Coming from a man of few words. Coming from a man of three words.
Trying to be brief.
No ums. There's dice of bird.
No, no ums, you gotta use a single um.
Nifty's.
The Department of Public Works has been working alongside Dustin O'Neal to develop a report. Touching upon barriers. That are. Evidence in our bylaws uh and in subdivision regulations for green infrastructure. Uh, that goes the first one, they were the first. I tried, I was working real hard for that first sentence.
You're doing good.
These barriers are based off of an analysis, or rather, I should say, the barriers, the barriers are based off of what are now called industry standards. Whereas the town has minimal width for rights of way and paved uh roads as well as diamonds for cul-de-sac and so on and so forth. The industry standards. Would like to reduce those specific dimensions. In other cases, we have setbacks that are minimums. And only allow flexibility for butthole residential development. Otherwise, someone has to bear poor variants and feed their cakes. Uh, that's another opportunity where I'm going to say to the impact of development. For impervious surfaces. Results in a greater stormwater impact. Uh, so part of this effort alongside Dustin O'Neal essentially is to run through and categorize our. Regulations. And bylaws as they relate to those standards, score them in a way, feel, what is an active barrier, what is? Moderately achieving the low effective element goals and where we have achieved some degree of alignment between those two. Uh, as you might imagine, and a lot of us coming from all the same. Our documents and sources, the recent stormwater um bylaw goes a long ways towards, let's say, encouraging or at least welcoming those types of. Infrastructure pieces. There's still a long ways to go. For subdivision regulations, um, anything perhaps more liberal in terms of setbacks and allowing a case-by-case analysis. Where those would fit best, and we can fit low impact. Development, stormwater. Elements, generally, if you take space within a given fifty-foot right of way, you have twenty-four feet, maybe twenty-two, maybe twenty in the recommended conditions, there isn't a lot of space left for roadside surface drainage. And so that's a good example of a barrier. For this type of development. Without drawing it out much further, this is an ongoing um. Discussion and documents that we're having with consultants and if there are any recommendations or anything that the board members. Been putting in mind in the coming weeks. Let's run across the past, say, hey, you know, this just doesn't. that you run across the past, said, hey, you know, this just doesn't make sense, you're welcome to reach out. Eventually, some portion of this needs to be implemented. Part of this report will be a schedule for finding ways and opportunities to implement these low impact development techniques. So a lot of factors involved between public safety, public works and planning kind of relate to all of this particular document. When it's finalized, after the sheriff, if there's anything that jumps out to you, every time you, we do a subdivision, every time it's older or the cul-de-sac is just seems way too vague and even the fire department isn't on. Please reach out, let me know. So move along.
We shall.
Good.
Yeah.
All right.
What are we doing with it? You are going to digest the information and if an idea comes to you, you'll share it with me.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to.
That's okay.
Get this thing over. You can print it out and slide it to that.
I'm for sure. Um, all right, so earth excavation permit at Hudson Drive for TiltCon Concentrated Permit. Everyone's holder for corporate correspondence. From, is that penned by Mr. Saunders at EDP? Yes. As related to some of the suggested modifications to TiltCon or that's written special permit. Mr. Saunders did write today and ask that we take up this discussion in greater depth at our next meeting.
Looks like they're just looking to adjust it to take out the responsibility of the part where the solar grounds are.
That part of the picture, I think there's a couple of other, I'm gonna call it, permit amendment items that should come into play as they look to update what is a very long amount of permit.
Sent on to. More pregnant.
No, this has not, not just yet. We'll share it with them.
Drafted the letter. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay. All right. Liz West posting a security and lot release covenant.
Just a quick update, the board, I think, has done their work in terms of considering the lot release and the substitution of performance bonded place of that, nothing's been signed as the private plant continues to assemble what they need to post that bond with the town clerk. When that's done, I'll reach out to everyone.
Okay. Chris Teef.
I met with Mr. Ravinski today to look, he's done some, he's determined formal striping of the gravel lot. I wanted to talk to him and get the occupancy rating from the restaurant itself, talk a little more in great detail about his projection for the occupancy of the buildings. I'll talk with the buildings by the way, make sure that calculation is reasonably aligned. This all generated from discussion about a potential ma contemplated request to expand its license apply to that. So at the same time, we recognize there are some side improvements that should be implemented. Also have opportunity to talk with conservation, your conservation agent who's in tenants and observe the proposed location of the place structure he's going to construct. Right, as you're facing it. If you are facing the property, it is behind the building, so you have the building, you have the level area that is the excepting system. On the backside of that, where there's a small amount of fill and some grass space between there and the conservation areas.
So we're going to try to do a site plan review when he's all set with what he's got there?
That's my presumption, under that previous decision you was to submit a site plan. I think matters have advanced to a certain degree beyond that original decision to re-credit restaurant use. All right.
Look, Gregoire property.
Yes, Mr. Gregoire asked last meeting reconsider this matter on his behalf, I reached out to the colleague in the survey world. There's a discussion that he needs to have that may provide him with an opportunity if it hasn't already been thoroughly investigated by other survey. So that's where that is. I told him I would leave it here. Just for the brief update.
Depot Square. Reduction equals.
Everybody might have a copy of that request. So the current stormwater bond up there is for $175,000. The project is generally complete from an infrastructure standpoint, Randy Brown does have a number puntless items. The biggest one is that's through field modifications, the stormwater basins are in different shapes than they were originally designed. So making sure that the current shapes still provide adequate volume. Who Randy's looking to have that calculation? That's why I am trying to reference in my response letter that I think is on the backside or a statement to that request letter. So Randy agrees that before any action taken on the more bond that will act comparison. Understanding that reshaping of smaller basins point will exhaust 20,000 or so suggested feature reduction.
Housing Production Plan Committee membership.
So this is really on here, it just says that a placeholder, understanding that this is a subunit and effort associated with the master plan advisory committee. Mr. Phelps, you're welcome to expand upon the current logic, but I wanted to have it here to acknowledge the planning board, our intent.
Right, is mainly to let the planning board know that our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission contact Ken Camia. Of course, will be doing a separate housing plan as part of the master planning process. And we don't intend to form a separate subcommittee. I think the best thing to do is to utilize the housing authority, which has at least four members, possibly five, and participate in one of their meetings where Ken Camia would give a presentation on housing plans. And we would also use one of our master plan advisory committee members, Amber Bach, who's a Realtor and understands housing and buying and selling, plus myself. So I would see it as a work group less than a quorum of the master planning advisor committee who would participate in a meeting with the housing authority to go over where we're going, since the housing plan is utilizing money from the Community Preservation Act that was out of the housing portion of that program. So we want to keep them informed and get their input as we move forward with the housing plan, which will be a component of the master plan. So. I don't know, Mr. Spina would also like to. Maybe we'll get you on another work group. Yes, yeah. Anyway, that's where we are.
All right. Short term rental subcommittee update.
Okay, we had a meeting last week. We've got 100.9 responses for the questionnaire. They were put together, trying to figure out what's where and what's what. It's sort of wide open at this point, we're trying to get a feel as to where everybody on the board is, whether they're for or against, or if they're either way and what their opinions are, what their parameters are for this. There's another meeting coming up the next month. It's coming, I mean, it's gonna take some while, it's not gonna make everybody happy. That's where he goes, but it's interesting, a lot of the responses were from people around the lakes, which is obvious. No problem we had, we had Jim from Port of Health, wasn't sworn into the board health, right? So he was listed just as an attendee. Has he been sworn in yet?
He has not, that's actually that perhaps we can contemplate tonight.
Okay.
Or perhaps. I have to raise it to select board.
Did somebody reappointed to the committee?
So Tom Fitzgerald had, is the appointed member of the committee from the board as the health agent, but he is transitioning out of that role and Mr. Alex White is the new health agent for the town south.
This is experience, do you know anything about him?
I couldn't tell you quite precisely.
Well, is Tom Fitzgerald willing to serve, continue to serve?
Can't even answer that question precisely. I know Alex was there. I was pleased with progress and then the acknowledgement with some assistance came forth that there was a change of guard.
Doug, do you know whether the board, the select board needs to less that change or not?
By now, I don't know.
Okay, so he's got a point or a.
Well, we, we may have to, I just don't know if it needs to go with the rest of the level of select board or not.
We're gonna have to, if you're swapping out the person for a slot that the select board already approved to exist on the committee? Do they have to, do they have to approve?
I think it depends. Yeah, you're right, I think it depends if the subcommittee consists of a planning board member, a board of selectmen appointee, the health agent, the health agent changed, well, then that's a natural. But if it was Tom Fitzgerald was appointed and needs to resign in come June 30th, they'll probably take care of itself.
Yeah, we'll go back and look, we'll go to the next one, I think it's a border felt appointee. A border health representative is the spot that is approved by the select board and the planning board.
At that time, when he said it's time, he had just stepped back into the role.
Yeah, we can probably.
Well, right, that was like when we appointed him, it was like we were gonna have Florida Health any center and then in the between saying we were gonna do it and actually implementing it, they got swapped over.
Well, at least, why don't we at least have for the, we can look into it to make sure there's no other further action, but why don't we at least do a motion here to accept the replacement of the border health representative as Alex White from, from top to show.
Make a motion. Just a second.
Dave, can you say?
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave's gonna aye.
All right, so then we'll look into whether there's anything else that needs to be done and then at least that can move along with swearing in.
Keep John Craig, John pick that up.
I can't take.
Well, look at.
I was excited that it was.
Sure. No. You want to just look at, did you look at the minutes for the, you already did, right, for the master plan? I did from June 2nd.
They were approved by the committee.
So do I hear a motion to accept the minutes for the master plan, private committee from June 7th?
So move.
Well, it's gotta be, it's, I, yeah.
We'll get it done. He's just sitting there.
Marcus Phelps will make the motion.
Dave Spina will second.
There you go. Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Fort, aye. I was there, I'm, I'm the trigger.
I think we signed.
Did you guys sign the next motion?
Oh, we did.
We did not sign that. We approved them.
John, who signed that, John, who signed that sheet again, the one I saw the couple?
David Spina.
I make a motion to close with me.
David Spina, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right.
Boy, didn't we get some stuff.